Okay. Good evening, council, staff, residents, delegates. To the regular council meeting for Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five, and we're being streamed live. I'll call the meeting to order at six thirty with the land acknowledgement. We are meeting today on the traditional territory of the many nations, including the Huron-Windat, Anishinaabe, and the Haudenosaunee peoples. We acknowledge our shared obligation to respect, honor, and sustain these lands and the natural resources contained within. We honor their cultures and celebrate their commitment to this land. We would also like to acknowledge the Mohawk and Algonquin nations whose traditional and unceded territory we are gathered upon today. Hastings County is situated on treaty land that is steeped in rich indigenous history and home to many First Nations, Métis, and Anulit people. Next on the agenda, I need an approval of motion that the agenda for the regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake for Tuesday, January twenty first, two thousand and twenty five be approved as presented. And I have a mover and a seconder, Jane and Ron. Any discussion on that agenda? All in favor? That's carried. Is there any declaration of community area interests? Being none. Next on the agenda is the mayor's report. For January twenty first. December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty four, I presided over the final Marmaroon Lake meeting for two thousand and twenty four. December nineteenth, I attended the emergency planning meeting at the fire department. December twentieth, I attended the final board of health meeting for the Southeast Transition Team in Kingston. At this meeting, following receipt of the decision and approval of the merger of the three boards from the Ministry of Health, the necessary motions and decisions were made to dissolve the three legacy boards effective December thirty first at twelve A M. To establish the new Southeast Health Unit, a meeting was announced for January first, two thousand and twenty five, at three o'clock. At that meeting, elections were held for the chair and vice chair. I was elected chair and Judy Greenwood Spears, Mayor of Frontneck Islands, was elected vice chair. And I'll speak to the merger in a in more detail in the agenda further. January the third, I met with Dr. Peter Piotr Oglaza, Medical Officer of Health for the new Southeast Health Unit. This initial meeting was to discuss next steps to scheduling the first business meeting and establishing an appropriate agenda. January the sixth, Councillor Derry and C A O Conley and I met with Lions Club members Cynthia Reed and Alan Fluke to discuss the terms of a new Lions Club agreement with the municipality. Staff are preparing a draft of the new agreement based on our discussion, and we will meet again to review that draft. And then the final version will be brought to the council meeting after that meeting. January the eighth, I presided over a special meeting with council for the purpose of approving funds to replace a computer system at the Marmaroon Delora Water Plant. January the ninth, I presided over a meeting of the personnel committee. January the tenth, I met with Dr. Peter Oglaza to further prepare for the next meeting of the Southeast Health Unit scheduled for January twenty second in Kingston, that's tomorrow. This is an open meeting. The main agenda topics are approval of the terms of reference for the finance and governance committees and appointing interested members to those committees and the set meeting schedules for the monthly Board of Health meetings and committee meetings. January the eighteenth to the twenty first, I attended the two thousand and twenty five Roma Conference representing Hastings County. The conference was well organized with a number of educational and informative speakers and expert panel. Chantelle Hébert, I think I said her name right. She's a government analyst and journalist, and she was the keynote speaker. She spoke on current government affairs, provided insight to the incoming elections, the potential leaders, their challenges, et cetera. Her message conveyed many things to be considered in how the next government, both provincial and federal, need to provide leadership in a very new and unconventional society and in response to the American election and the political climate going forward. The ministers who spoke at Roma were focused on rural support, the need to recognize the unique standard of living and diverse needs in rural areas, but with no commitments. I truly think they're confused about the term rural versus northern. Councilor Lactose and C A O John Conley and I made a delegation to John Yakabuski, representing Mr. Lechi, the Minister of Energy, regarding support for the pump storage project. Mr. Yakabuski had worked previously with the former M P P Todd Smith in his role as energy critic. He was very familiar with the project and had toured the site numerous times. That was great because you only have fifteen minutes, so my presentation became focused on the future economic advantage advantage this project would bring to an area of low-income seniors and underserved populations. I emphasized the change in culture and that this project would benefit over a huge geographic area. And today I was interviewed by Windy News about the project and our delegation. I am reassured that the project is still viable, however, it is apparent that nuclear power generation seems to be taking some priority. January twenty first, today I returned on the train to Belleville, and I chaired the regular planning meeting just prior to this meeting. And tonight is our regular council meeting. And tomorrow is the first business meeting of the new Southeast Health Unit, so I would like to give you just some quick information on how this has transpired. As you know, I've been involved in the voluntary merger of the three boards of health. This is a snapshot of the events and meetings leading up to the establishment of this new health unit. It's an honor and a privilege to be elected as chair for the new Southeast Health Unit. Hastings, Prince Edward Public Health, Kingston, Frontneck, Atlantic, and Addington, and Leeds, Burnville, and Lanark are the three that merged. The merger of the three boards involved presenting a business business case to the Ministry of Health needing specific criteria that representation of a critical mass would be at least five hundred thousand. This will result in a shared geographical area and realignment with Ontario Health regions to allow for more efficient use of resources and an enhanced capacity to manage public health emergencies with human resource backup. The provincial government has committed to provide the necessary funding for the first three years. The merger will result in one administration being Kingston Location with the legacy units represented by municipal appointments from each of the former units and five political appointees from across the entire geographic area. The initial monthly meetings will be held in rotation of the legacy units being Kingston, Brockville, and Belleville. Dr. Piotr Oglaza will be the Medical Officer of Health and C E O for the merged agency. Dr. Ethan Tunichay and Dr. Lena Lee, our Deputy Medical Officers of Health and Dr. Hugh Gawn will remain his role as Associate Medical Officer of Health. The province is also offering one-time funding for merger-related supports, for example, capital improvements, infrastructure, I T, finance, contribution, and program harmonization, merger communications, as well as legal and human resources and government transitions. Merging of programming and staff will be done in a way that service delivery is not impacted. There are no anticipated job losses for frontline staff. It has been my personal objective and belief in the benefits of this merger to reduce health inequities in rural areas and enhance the programs and accessibility of services that aid our most vulnerable residents. This is not primary healthcare, but the healthcare facilities and operations are definitely stakeholders and partners in this process. Dr. Oglaza acknowledged that there will be a process of developing a framework of indicators to report to the board on progress of the merger, as well as operations across the entire region, especially in rural areas. This is a very good start. Thank you. Next, we have delegation, a delegation tonight. Michael Carey and Eric Chaplin, Corftha White Water paddlers. Come up to the the desk and welcome. And I understand one of our delegates is going to be on. There he is.
And go. Very much for allowing me to come in.
You're very welcome.
Chat with you.
Welcome to both of you.
I'm assuming, or I want to never assume, that you've had a chance to review the documentation that we have. And our request is really just to have a fee exemption or a fee reduction for the rentals of the fairgrounds. I'm part of the Corftha paddlers, or sorry, the Corftha White Water paddlers, or K W P. And we have a spring event in the Marmaroon area going on since two thousand and eight last COVID, where we've come in and have three days of, well, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, of crazy cold fun. Take advantage of the whitewater rivers that are flowing nicely in this area in the springtime. And we have a lot of people come in from all over different areas, and we need places for them to come in and stay. So we've been lucky to use the fairgrounds for the last number of years here. And over the years, the fee has changed from zero in two thousand and two and then progressively gone up. And then this year, we were quoted, I believe, it's fifteen hundred and eighty-two dollars for three days. We are a non-for-profit organization. We, all of the funds that we receive and donations that we receive actually go back to local charities and come back into the community. We're bringing people into the area to help bring up some of the economy that's here in the slower time of the year. So if we can somehow get a fee reduction or an exemption from the fairgrounds, it would be fantastic because that's more money that we can give back to the local charities. For two thousand and twenty-five, we've already identified two large food banks that we're giving our monies to. So it's in the best interest of everybody that is here. As you can anticipate, you know, as you can probably imagine, it's chilly in the springtime, so when we're paddling. And it'd be nice to sometimes get a place to get warm. We respect the bylaws. We're not allowed to do any fires, even though we try to kind of accommodate some way around it where we can have a fire pit that's off the ground, but we're not going to do something to jeopardize anything. So it's cold, it's damp, it's not an ideal time of year to be in that area, but we're kind of limited to where we can go, so. We don't have a lot of campers, and we are partnered with the Curling Club, so people kind of come in and there and get warmed up. But we're really just trying to get an exemption on the rate because if you can give us a break, we can actually give more money back into the into the local areas.
Thank you. Anything further? Is that the the gentleman on three, does he want to speak?
No, not really. I I'm good, apart from if you guys have other other charities that we could look to donate each year. We'd always like to see what's in need.
Yeah. In two thousand and two, we donated seventeen hundred dollars. In two thousand and twenty-three, we donated forty-six hundred dollars. Last year was a little bit quieter for us, but we still ended up donating three thousand dollars to the local charities and different organizations in the Marmaroon area. So it's kind of a win-win, we're hoping.
Well, thank you for that. Questions, Mike?
Sorry. Are you still using the Curling Club for the bar and your meals and washrooms and things like that? You have a deal with them going forward, too? Okay, so I was hoping so. I was talking to some people at the Curling Club. And I understand the Curling Club does fairly well over the weekend because of the meals they provide and charge for and from the bar. And I do believe, you can correct me if I'm wrong, you do pay them a fee for the use of the hall for the vendors and things like that. So there's money coming back into the municipality through the Curling Club. I do appreciate your donations to the charities in town, especially the food banks. They're having a tough time right now. There's more people using them, it seems to be. I just wanted to clarify what's coming through. At this point in time, can I make any kind of motion, Mayor O'Neill, or some kind of recommendation?
I believe there's a recommendation further in the in the agenda, Mike? No?
Okay, I don't think so.
Oh, oh, sorry. I thought I thought there was a recommendation.
I I would like to make a recommendation that due to the money that you return to the community and that that we just charged a flat fee of four hundred dollars for the weekend and reduce the fees to that going forward. Or if somebody else has a different idea, but I think the money basically comes back to the community either here, Madoc, or Queensborough. But the majority of it's through here. And we also, you also are supporting our local Curling Club through using their facilities and through the vendors and that that you have in that hall at that point in time. So that's my justification for reducing the fee.
Other questions, Jane? Oh, sorry, go ahead.
Yeah, I just have a couple of questions. So do you have an idea, like to quantify how many people participate in MacFest?
It it's varying, depending upon the year, I think. I was trying to do the numbers in my head based on the number of tables we had set up at the Curling Club last year. And I think each one has about ten place settings, and I would think we maybe had fifteen, maybe eighteen tables set up. So it's a hundred and fifty to maybe two hundred people, but not everybody stays on the fairground. Some people will go to local motels or rent Airbnbs. Some people are in the area where it's like I'm I'm living north, so it's close enough for me to come there. And I sometimes have people camping out in our farm. So a hundred and fifty people, plus or minus, will be at the curling rink, enjoying the meal prepared by the probably curling people. And dancing away, having some fun, but I can't say that there's maybe a hundred people on the campground. I don't know if maybe Eric, you might have a clearer idea. It it varies.
And you for when your participants do camp at the fairground, you do charge them a fee to get some cost recovery there, is that correct?
It's a small fee, yes.
Okay, and for participants that are participating in MacFest, is there a fee for that just for participation?
No, no, it's the fees that are coming in if you want to have a meal. So you would pre-order your meals, but you can actually come to the event at the end of the night and just enjoy yourself, bring your own meals. Come in and see the vendors that are there and go on and do your own thing.
Okay, and I know last year you had some vendors there as well. Do you charge them for the space when they're like in the Curling Club selling?
I'm not privy of that information. That would have to come through our secretary. We can get some, I can get that back to you. But I would, there are certain costs that are associated for running an event, something like this.
Yeah.
So, yes, like there is no the money that we 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 bring in, we just cover the costs. Nobody's making any money on this because it is a non-for-profit, so we have to kind of you know, follow the rules. Yeah. But yeah, everything that we receive covers the costs and then goes back in the in the in the area.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Jane, and then John?
Um, I just I'm, excuse me, Madam Mayor. We have a motion on the floor, but there's no seconder. So I would need a seconder before we could continue to discuss it. Yeah.
I can't hear anybody.
Your mic is off.
No, Kristen cut you off or what?
Oh, it turns itself off. It has a mind of its own. So are you putting that motion on the floor then, Mike? I can't hear you. You must be muted.
And I went from, now I'm unmuted. Yes, I'll make a motion that we just charge them a flat fee of two hundred dollars a night. Seeing as it's a nonprofit, no profits for excess funds.
Dollar a night? Is that what you said?
Four hundred dollars. They're using it for Friday night and Saturday night, from what I believe from the documentation we got.
Okay. So do I get a seconder for that motion, Jane? Any further comments? Jane?
So, um, I've actually had a really hard time with this. And I I I understand that you're donation and a not-for-profit. Having been in 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 business myself, I know that there's other ways to make sure that your costs are covered and and give donations at all. Also, um, the way I read it, it's it's like you're asking us to fund your donations by reducing our costs. And that may be a hard way of looking at it, but I'm just trying to get my head around it, and I just wanted to offer that comment. That's where I'm standing.
Thanks, Jane. Any, Ron?
Just a question about your donations. How do you determine those are different every year, it looks like? Do you base it on how much is made, or how do you base your donation amount you donate every year?
Where are we donated or how much we donate? It's, again, that is something that would probably be have to be discussed. Like, I can get that information back to you.
But you don't have a formula? Are you just, or is it based on your revenue? Like, that's all I'm wondering.
It's, we 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 reach out to the area to find out what are the local donations or what are the local organizations that do need donations? And then we try to distribute that equally to a certain portion based on the amount of people that are actually taking advantage of the certain charity. So food banks are the biggest ticket item this type of year, so there's more going into there. And then there should the other, you know, I don't want to say trickle-down, but there should, it will kind of work its way through. It should be noted that we do run two charities throughout the year. The MacFest is the one, and then we have another one called Paddle for Benny, which was initiated in two thousand and twenty-one, where there's a tragic event with one of our paddler's sons. And we have a charity that goes on every year, and we donated thirty-six thousand dollars to mental health through different organizations there. So we are kind of keeping, trying to keep the ball rolling. So people will come to us, people will talk to us, different different things. And even some of the members, our paddling members, communities will come in and say, this would be a great organization for you to kind of, you know, come into, but we try to keep it local.
So do you have a sense in this year what you're gonna donate, or do you have to know what your revenue is first?
We, it it's, it no, we don't really even have a good idea until how many people are signing up to come to the event. Economy is a big thing. You know, it's it paddling is not an expensive sport. And we try to keep it that way, you know, as as cost-effective or cost-efficient as possible. But, um, no, I can't tell you exactly how many years, or sorry, how much revenue are going to be coming in. I do know that wouldn't, we wouldn't still be doing this since two thousand and eight. We love to paddle, we love to get together and have some fun. If we can make it a weekend, then that's great. And like I said, we, I can get you the number to see how much we donated over the year, but I'm sorry, I don't know.
I'm not trying to get you to say what you're doing. I just wondered how you write up the number, that's all I was wondering.
Yeah, we we just cover the cost and recover what we have, and that's information I don't have.
Yeah, sure, thanks.
I'm just geographically located close.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, I just have a comment that we do have a fee schedule bylaw that council has just recently passed which our staff are, when something's scheduled, our staff apply that. I look at, um, I I really think what you're doing is wonderful, don't get me wrong. But I look at, it's not just the fairgrounds that are impacted here. There's also, if there's an emergency, our fire department has to react to it. You know, there are some other factors here. It's not just putting tents up on the fairground. So I'd just like to point that out. Because, like I said, it's not just the fairgrounds that services could be required.
We we appreciate that, and sadly, we've had to use rescue one time, though we did have, you know, a situation where, you know, it's a cold water storm. And and we do try to go around and 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 clean the rivers prior to any events going down. So any of the fishermen who were taking advantage of the rivers throughout the season, a lot of the debris is already gone because we've already gone through it. Now, we fall under the insurance through the Whitewater of Ontario, so we do have our own insurance and coverage that is there, so there's no liability to anybody else. But I do understand and respect that going through. We're just trying to say that we we still want to come here. We still want to take advantage of it. If if we're charged the fifteen hundred dollars, that's fine. Like, I I I hope we can cover the costs. It just means less is going out to the to the charities. It's charitable.
Thank you. Any any further comments or questions on, Mike?
Um, I think what, I don't think Ron was asking specifically how much money you're going to give. I think you answered the question, and you give whatever profit you make. You don't keep like a percentage of it for yourselves. The profit from this event goes back into the community because you're a nonprofit, I would understand. The other thing, according to Jane, the converse is true. If they're donating to the food bank, we don't have the food bank coming to the municipality looking for funds from us or funds from our residents because they got money there. They're also supporting the Curling Club. The Curling Club is making money off the meals, the bar, plus the rental fee that they're charging for the vendors and things like that, where they make money with raffles and stuff like that. So at that point of the year, also, there's nobody else renting the fairgrounds. And I understand that's a moot point and really shouldn't count. But still, there's nobody else out there that's going to rent those fairgrounds, so there's not a competition for funds at that point in time. So I feel strongly that anybody, you know, that's raising money in our municipality and donating money back to the things in us is offsetting some of the costs that it will cost us to provide services to the municipality and therefore is doing us good. Hopefully, there's some spin-off. I'm very dubious when people tell us how much money they think there is in spin-off coming to municipalities because other than gas and a few meals, I doubt if there's a huge amount because most of those people are involved in paddling or being down at the Curling Club, having a drink with their buddies who they haven't seen in a year. So anyways, I'd still like to maintain my motion going forward.
Thanks, Mike. If there's no other questions, I'll call to a vote. All in favor? That motion is defeated. Thank you. Thank you for your delegation. So there's no one here under public input. Next on the agenda is the adoption of the minutes of the regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake for Tuesday, December the seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Can I have a motion to approve those, please? Eric? And Ron, any discussion on those minutes? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Minutes of the special regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake held Wednesday, January the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five. And the recommendation is that the foregoing minutes of the special regular meeting of the council of the municipality of Marmaroon Lake held Wednesday, January the eighth, two thousand and twenty-five be approved as presented. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Jane and Eric, any discussion on those minutes? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Next on the agenda are the staff reports for the fourth quarter. And I'd just like to welcome our staff members here and thank them for being here and they're here in case where any of the reports of council has any questions, you can be directed to the staff. And and so I need a motion that the staff reports for the fourth quarter of two thousand and twenty-four be received for information. Can I have a mover, Ron, and a seconder? Mike? Okay, anyone have any comments or questions? And John, you wanted to speak?
Yeah, sorry, you carried to the rest of council. I just wanted to make an introduction to all the reports, all the Q four reports, and then also there's one with respect to the treasurer's report that the treasurer sort of give a little bit more information, but what I wanted to do was highlight not just the department heads and the senior staffs that are here in terms of the reports they're doing. So this is following up on something that was established by council a year ago, so this is sort of, you know, Q one to Q four. It's there. It's very good work. It's the work of not only department heads, but their team. A lot of effort goes into it. One of the things I'd like to do, and we'll discuss as a as a senior management team in a meeting next week, on a go-forward basis, what we'd like to do is provide for council the idea of year over year. So all of these reports are great. It certainly shows the metrics that are there. In some cases, they're more narrative. Others are are numbers themselves, but I think what would be beneficial for council, if something is four hundred and it's five hundred this year, is that a good thing or the wrong or a bad thing? But I think providing a bit of that analysis and that narrative will do that, to sort of stitch those together. The reason why I wanted to do was bring senior management here and and key staff was to be able to highlight the work that they're doing. And again, if council has any specific questions on the reports on the on the tables that are there, I'd certainly love to have council be able to ask those questions. I think where I'm looking for next year or in this year in terms of subsequent reports is kind of something in the narrative that you may have seen in the in the bylaw report, which was the narrative that Rick Dearing had provided, which was a sort of a an analysis of what happens and trying to provide some reasons as to why there's more complaints, why that number's gone up. Get to some of that stuff because I think that's more of a value add for for council to be able to understand some of the dynamics that are going on. Because again, the people here at the tables and the teams that they represent are all there in the field and they're doing this work every day. So it's a good opportunity to highlight that effort. And I just wanted to have that opportunity for them to be here, and should council have any question?
Thank you, John, absolutely. I find these reports Thank you, John. Absolutely. Um I find these reports fairly informative. Like, we don't get to talk to individual staff members every day. Um and the fact that we can look at this and take time to digest if we have questions, we can. I know we can call when we don't have to wait for a council meeting to do it, to ask the questions, but um I I think it's very valuable and I think it puts um in the public, it gives them actual data. Um it's not people dreaming up. That misinformation. So they've got facts before them and uh it also gives us speaking points. Um you know, when people ask us questions about what's going on in the department. So thank you each and every one of you for um putting together your reports. And I really like the fact when your reports are on the agenda that you're here. So I'd like to make that a a practice. So. Anyway, thank you. So does anybody have any questions for staff on on any of the reports? Mike, go ahead.
I got several. Um I notice on Rick's report is his hour, not his hours, but his calls, if you want to call him. It's up about thirty three percent over the previous year. I just curious, are you getting enough hours, Rick, to be able to handle this excess? Going for is Rick there? I can't see people.
I'm certainly not looking for more hours. That's. That's reality. Yeah, I've been able to manage uh.
Okay.
Uh and uh be honest, there are times when I have gone above my allotted hours. And so far, there haven't been any major repercussions in relation to that. So my sense is, I think my uh my assignment is to deal with bylaw officers, bylaw offenses or calls for service as required. And so that uh nothing would linger and come back to council. And that's sort of the way I've approached it.
Well, I I I also sit on the OPP board and from the reports we get there, we are a fractious municipality over here when certain things come to the fore. So I can understand that. The other question I got if Victor is, what is MFAO? We got twenty hours from it's a ministry of something.
Ministry of Finance and Officers Association, Mike.
Okay, so they're helping us get things set up. It's basically what they're doing.
Yeah, it's been an ongoing thing for two or three years and we have ten hours right now to use. Which we allocated to uh do some data collection at the arena.
Okay, thank you. And the fire department. I calculated it. There's a hundred and ten major incidents at the fire department this year. That's over two a week. So I think the guys at the fire department are fairly busy. Um just wanted to make that comment. Parks and Recreation, I just. Love to see all the repairs and maintenance getting done. That have been neglected for the last three or years. So kudos to you guys. And if Dylan's a transportation problem, lots of brushing and ditching getting done. Is that over and above because of the weather if Dylan's there?
Yeah, yeah, just now that we have our own machine, we've actually, Marmarren Township is ninety eight percent complete on brushing.
Good. Good for you guys. Congratulations. And the last one is Nancy's, which we're gonna talk about. I read at this point, my comment was excellent. But thank you, everybody. Appreciate all the work you did.
Thanks, Mike. Anybody else have any comments? Jane?
I have um two questions, one for Rick for the for the 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 bylaw in your in your comments. Um it it is my professional opinion that a number of existing bylaws may be outdated. Um have have you started a conversation with our C O as as to which ones you'd like to revisit and?
Not not with the new one.
Okay, with with.
Yeah, but I have spoken to our clerk. And we, I think we're on the same page in terms of some of these things. Some of them I think need to be addressed sooner than others for from a relevancy perspective. Uh but uh clearly, it's to re- rewrite our bylaws would be a monumental task, and I'm not recommending that. I'm recommending it sort of on an incremental uh uh triage as needed basis. Uh moving forward whenever it's possible.
Okay, that that was that was my second question. What what does that look like? So, okay, you've answered.
And if I could just add to counter, I also think that if the bylaws were a little more applicable to our municipality that exists today. And a lot of the verbiage was taken out of them, it would be easier for the ratepayers to read our bylaws and have a better understanding of exactly what's required and and what the expectation of bylaw enforcement in terms of these particular issues. And just one I'll point out. It's interesting is our sign by law. I'll just I'll leave it at that.
Is is that something that we're going to be tackling? Okay.
So through through your chair, the council, yeah, I think the idea is with this report is highlighting the idea of the where there are gaps, where things need to be, attention has to be done. We'll need to prioritize that based on obviously uh the the barometer here is the number of increases and then getting to the root cause. And again, Rick has been very good at being able to understand what are the stories behind that? And if there's there are patterns emerging. And then working with the clerk and myself will put together a project of how we're going to tackle those on an ongoing basis and present that to council as part of a work plan.
Good, thanks. And my second and final question is for Victor. Um I'm I'm just curious. Hydro uh uh upgrades at Brewster Park have been completed with the upgrades. Did 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 we add any additional spots? Or it was just to maintain the current ones?
Sorry, that's just to maintain the existing sites.
Okay, perfect. Thank you.
Okay, I just have a question. The updating of our municipal bylaws, would that become part of our strap plan?
Uh through your worship, yes, I think that would be a good part of doing that. The strategic plan would be looking at all those areas. This would be one of those areas that we were focused on, but absolutely, I think that's the best way to put the context to it.
Okay, great. Thank you. Anybody else have any? Go ahead, Eric.
Just a few general comments. Um in regards to uh Rick's report and that increase of calls, I just wanted to thank him for being available. A lot of the time as council, we get questions and public coming to us for clarification and we direct them um to Rick and to go through this specific process that they should be following for that. Sometimes it's an education piece. So I know um you know, your your inquiries are going up for. But thank you at the same time for taking the time and dealing with those residents and uh explaining why some of the bylaws exist and uh how they are enforced. Um in regards to the Economic Development Department report, uh just to note that the C I P program, the Community Improvement Program wasn't really utilized this year. We only had one uh usage of that program. As a reminder, that program is available for any uh business that wants to improve their business signage. Um that information is on the municipal website under the Economic Development uh section of the website. Or you can reach out to Tammy May in Economic Development. Um and the Economic Development Department notes as well, uh I don't think it got noted before. There was some discussion regarding the rehabilitation of the sign at the mine. Um the this originally went, that was an initiative of the Economic Development Advisory Committee that came forward um. That Tammy presented. I just wanted to highlight here that that project did get funded by Community Futures. So there's no uh we had discussed if it wasn't going to get Community Futures uh funding, it would come from the C I P program, but Community Futures did fund that program. So there's um no cost for the work that's going to be going into that sign rehab. Um. I'd just like to thank Jeff. I know as a one of our newer employees is a lot when it comes to facilities to wrap his head around. Uh and you know, every day is a new day in getting into every nook and cranny of the facilities that exist. Uh so thank you for the attention to detail on that. Um the treasures report, I really like the format of this report. Uh so thank you, Nancy, for bringing this forward with some actuals versus a budget number. It gives the public uh I better under window into uh what's going on and where we're at. Um I'd just like to note for information. There are several capital projects here that are being deferred till twenty twenty five that didn't get done for staffing or whatever reasons. And if you can just confirm, those funds are already already allocated in our budget, so they will just go into reserves. Be done in twenty twenty five and have no impact on twenty twenty five budget. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's correct. Um a lot of them you'll see in the twenty twenty five budget. Um and it's not a tax impact.
Because those funds just ended up in reserve, so.
Yes, yeah. So they're coming back out of reserves.
Okay, perfect. Thank you very much.
Comment? Anyway, again, thank you to each one of you. You uh, you know, you've been working together as a team and I think, you know, council benefiting from from that effort. So thank you very much. Okay, uh we need to vote on these reports. Can I ask for a vote? All in favor? That's carried. Thank you again. Uh next on the agenda, um Jeff, manager of Parks and Recreation, proposed beach house rental. Um so the recommendation is that council receive the proposed beach house rental. The wildlife rentals report dated January twenty first, twenty twenty five. And further, the council approved the rental of the Legion Park Beach House campaign for a seasonal contract to the wildlife rentals for the year twenty twenty five. And I have a mover and a seconder. Eric, second, Mike? Any discussion on that report? Eric?
I think this is a good initiative by um Sebastian. It'll bring more attention um to that area down there and people passing by on the highway. I think this is a good start um as a first trial run to see if that facility works for this type of use um at a reasonable rate. Uh I think the contract term here is appropriate, and then we can look in the future at um making it available publicly down the road to other businesses and looking at how this cost stacks up. So um I appreciate Sebastian for bringing this forward and uh it'll be an asset to the beach area.
Thank you. Anybody else have any comments on this report? Okay, um Jane, did you? No, oh, hey, all in favor? That's carried. Thanks, Jeff, for your report. Um next report, uh request for reduction of taxes for three sixty two High Shore Road. Um the recommendation is that council receive this request for reduction of taxes, chapter twenty five, section three fifty seven of the Municipal Act two thousand and one for three sixty two High Shore Road, report dated January twenty first, twenty twenty five. And further, the council approved the request of Bruce Orkwood for a reduction of taxes for the year twenty twenty four in the amount of seven hundred and twenty one dollars and eighty seven cents for three sixty two High Shore Road as per section three fifty seven of the Municipal Act. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Jane, second, Ron? Any discussion or questions on that report? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Next committee and board, do you want me to hold up while you guys? Just so it's not disrupting discussion here. Thank you for being here. So we'll move on to the committee and board reports. Um Eastern Ontario Trails Alliance recommendation is that foregoing minutes and reports of the committees and boards listed are hereby received for information. Can I have a mover and a seconder? Eric, I'm second. Jane, any discussion or question on those minutes? Eric?
I'll just share a couple um highlights of the E O T A's work. Uh the Millennium Bridge, uh that's the major bridge uh within the town of Bancroft that crosses the river uh and gives trail users access to go into town for food and gas. That bridge um just got all redone, uh new decking, new rubber surface on that. Um so that was a great addition. E O T A has also engaged Greer Galloway, just like the municipality is responsible for the bridges on the roadways. So is E O T A responsible for maintenance and safety of bridges on the trail system? That's not cheap. A lot of those bridges are very old rail bridges. And as usage of the trails change, as trail machines get heavier, um that all becomes an issue. Um so a lot, there's one bridge for sure that has had to have reduced limits on it right now. So that's something that's going to be coming forward in the E O T A's work in twenty twenty five. Uh as well as uh working with the county to improve signage and adding nine one one indicators for emergency response. Um there's been a couple situations that have happened where emergency services had a hard time locating uh issues on the trail. Uh so improving signage and adding some nine one one markers uh will help that. So the county uh is engaged on that level.
You, Eric? Any other questions on that report? All in favor? That's carried. Correspondence for direction, Crow Valley Conservation Authority and the recommend, it's the municipal brief. And the recommendation is that council receive the brief for information. I have a mover and a seconder. Ron and Jane? Second, um any comments or questions? All in favor? Thank you. That's carried. Um John Maho Mahu, I guess, Association of Ontario Road Supervisors. Um regarding Dylan Adams, Certified Road Supervisor, immediate intermediate certification. And the recommendation is that council receive the letter for information. And I have a mover and a seconder. Ron and Eric? Um any comments or questions? I'd just like to say congratulations, Dylan. Thank you for the extra work that you put into gaining that certification. Um. Anybody else have? No more comments? Okay. Uh Amelia Hoffman, Alzheimer's Society Hastings, Prince Edward, regarding Alzheimer's Awareness Month proclamation. And the recommendation is that January is hereby proclaimed Alzheimer's Awareness Month in the municipality of Marmarren Lake. And I have a mover and a seconder. Mike? And Jane, second, any discussion? Um I guess we can just officially declare that January is proclaimed Alzheimer's Alzheimer's Awareness Month in the municipality of Marmarren Lake. All in favor? That's carried. Building Inspection Services Board regarding the November twenty twenty four report. Um the recommendation is that council receive the report for information. Um moved by Ron and seconded by Eric. Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Ontario Court of Appeal Riverside Pines decision. And the recommendation is that council receive the decision from the Court of Appeals for Ontario dated January the eighth, twenty twenty five for information. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Eric and Jane, any discussion on that report? John, you want to speak to that?
Uh thank you very much, Sharon. So through you to council, I just wanted to point out that um this is a decision. So the Court of Appeal, it was something that was done live. It was my, I did attend, I believe, council doubts as well. Uh so I'm watching that and this is the decision that's there. In the interest of transparency and being able to sort of show what how things are happening as these go forward. I did want to have this on the agenda for council in open session, so they they were aware of what the decision was based on the wording in the decision and um basically the other things are already before the court still. I will be bringing back in post session because of the legal matter in February. We'll be bringing legal counsel to sort of translate what this means, the impact of this decision. And also from the idea of the course of action and the idea of what options are there available for council to deal with this matter. Again, it's something that's been going on for a couple of years. It's something that's affected our road staff. So we need to be able to have some decisions and be able to know how they can do their work and also how can we put this matter to rest. But just wanted again, for the interest of transparency, so council's aware of this, so the public is aware. I know it's something that's been active from social media. But the idea of being able to have that and also letting you know that I will be bringing back the report with legal counsel in February.
Thank you, John. Any other questions or comments on this report? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. Next is um Shannon Andrews um request farmers market letter um regarding Debbie Birch and her moving and request from Shannon Andrews. That council receive Debbie Birch's letter for information. That council grant permission to Shannon Andrews and Daryl Zay Jack to continue to reestablish the farmer farmers market in Debbiestead located at the municipal parking lot on the corners of Highway seven and Burstall Street. Commencing in twenty twenty five on Saturdays from eight AM to two PM for the month of. Commencing in twenty twenty-five on Saturdays from eight AM to two PM for the months of May to October. And further, the council direct staff to provide a report outlining insurance requirements for vendors and the site plan. Can I have a mover and a seconder, please? Jane, second, Eric? Any discussion on that recommendation? Being, go ahead, Eric.
Well, just thank you to someone else for taking the helm on this. I think uh it's an asset on the weekend and an opportunity for local vendors. So. Uh, thank you uh to those who stepped up to continue this.
Thank you. Anything further? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, M P P Rick Percy, congratulations to Mayor O'Neill and the recommendation is. That council accept the letter for information. I have a mover and a seconder. Ron and Jane? Any comments or questions? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, Ron Fudge, um, use of Booster Park for Polar Plunge Fundraiser. And the recommendation is that council grant grant the request of Ron Fudge to use Booster Park for a Polar Plunge Fundraiser. On Saturday, February the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five at one o'clock PM. And I have a mover in a seconder, Ron and Eric. Any discussion on that report? Oh, oh, go ahead, Mike.
Just just a comment. I think Ron's been running this for the last two or three years. You know, it seems to go over well. Definitely not something I would want to do, but. They can go to it. I think it's good for the firm in there to be there to to get some. Hopefully, practice training instead of real training.
I've gone the last two or three years just to observe and actually it's quite entertaining. Some of them put some costumes on and and things like that and it's, I think they have a good time and they have fun. So that's important too. Anyway, any other comments? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, Tim Mathewen, uh, Shuano Ratepayers Inc. Um, regarding the community music event request. And the recommendation is the council approve the request of the Shuano Ratepayers for use of the Marmarind Lake. Sand Dome property on North Steenberg Lake Road on August the sixteenth, twenty twenty-five for their annual community music event. And I have a mover in the seconder. Uh, Mike and Eric, any questions or comments? Being none, all in favor? That's carried. The bylaws, uh, bylaw number twenty twenty-five dash five temporary borrowing bylaw. Being a bylaw authorizing the temporary boring of borrowing of funds. Um, are we going to do these individually? Okay, um, can I get a mover in a seconder for that? Eric? And second? Ron, any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, bylaw twenty twenty-five dash six being an interim tax levy bylaw. Being a bylaw to levy the interim taxes for all tax classes in the municipality of Marmarind Lake for twenty twenty-five. Moved by Eric, second, Jane, any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaw twenty twenty-five dash seven, committee appointment bylaw. Being a bylaw to appoint or confirm members to various boards and committees for the purposes of the Corporation of the Municipality of Marmarind Lake. For the year twenty twenty-five. I get a mover in the seconder, Eric? Second? Jane, any discussion? All in favor? Carried. Uh, bylaw twenty twenty-five dash zero eight Municipal Treasurer Appointment Bylaw. Being a by law to appoint a municipal treasurer for the corporation of the municipality of Marmarind Lake. And I have a mover in a seconder. Mike and Eric? Any comments, questions? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaw twenty twenty-five dash nine, bylaw enforcement officer being. A bylaw to appoint a bylaw enforcement officer for the corporation of the municipality of Marmarind Lake. Mover in a seconder, please. Ron and second Jane? Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaw twenty twenty-five dash ten Municipal Fire Chief Appointment Bylaw. Um, the recommendation being a bylaw to appoint a fire chief for the corporation of the municipality of Marmarind Lake. Can I have a mover in the seconder? Ron and second? Mike, any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Bylaw number twenty twenty-five dash eleven Municipal Auditor Appointment Bylaw. Being a bylaw to appoint a municipal auditor for the corporation of the municipality of Marmarind Lake. A mover in a seconder, please? Ron and Jane, any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. Uh, any, uh, there's no notice of motions, but if anyone have announcements, Eric?
Uh, sure, I have a couple. First of all, I'd like to congratulate the Marmara Pickleball Club on their one-year anniversary. Uh, they now offer a program to the community that takes place uh three nights a week. Friday nights uh is available for new players looking to learn the game or come out and try it for the first time. Uh, so you can follow the Marmara Pickleball Club on Facebook for more information if you would like to come out and try that. Uh, I'd also like to highlight uh this week's community press article. Marmara made the front page. For the rink. Uh, a big thank you to all the community groups and I and business sponsors that stepped up to do that. Uh, I'd like to name them by name because they really stepped up to make this happen. It wouldn't have been. Possible without the funding that was available from the community groups that funded the project as well as the businesses that stepped up. In their time or to offer their services. Um, in advance of that, I'd also like. To thank Merv Taylor, who's been putting work in every single night. Flooding the rink, going there uh after hours, uh, keeping it in perfect shape for community users. The grand opening that happened was a real success. It was a really good turnout. Uh, at the rink and it's been constantly being used. So uh, a real asset to the community. So. Uh, just to name them by name, the funding sponsors, the Marmara Lions Club, the Marmara Legion, Mars. The Marmara Boosters Association. The Marmarind Lake Businesses that supported the project. Herseptic Pumping and Hauling, who donated the porta potty that's on site. Fudge's four K Contracting, who took care of the construction and sourcing the materials. Uh, Alt House Property Maintenance, Devon Alt House, who. Uh, took care of the ground leveling and the groundwork uh in advance of the rent creation. Dave Sharp, Belmont Custom Cabin Cabinetry, who's from Havlock, uh, he's been a real asset in the project. Uh, he runs the rink in Havlock, uh, so shared his expertise uh and helped get this project going. As well as exposure signs, who's uh provided discounts and some complimentary signage. Uh, so that all the information was clear. Uh, the municipality of Marmarind Lake. Also supported the project. Uh, the Parks and Rec Department, Jeff did work moving the bleachers. Uh, assisting with getting the grounds ready, uh, putting out uh rubber mats. The Marmarind Lake Fire Department, who also stepped up volunteers from there to help fill uh the rink. Uh, and then we have many community members who go out every night to help shovel it and keep it clear as well as throughout the day. Um, so it's it's been a real success. So uh, thank you to everyone involved in that project. And I encourage everyone to lace up their skates and go check it out.
And just to add to your list, um, I noticed Derek for some of the school students were doing their community hours, helping to. Uh, shovel the the ice and keep the ice clear.
Yep, any, if there are students that want community hours, you can uh go on Facebook and search the Marmara. Outdoor Rink Facebook page and you can message them, letting them know that you're willing to help and uh. They can get you out there and work on shoveling it or assisting with flooding.
Thank you. Anybody else? Jane?
Counselor, those are hard act to follow. Um. I I I I attended the Roma twenty twenty-five conference. Um, I just got back into town on this afternoon, actually. Um, I attended a few sessions, um, just to gain information. Um, one of them was was the delegation. That um, the mayor had spoke about. I attended the the. M P A C information session. Unfortunately, there are no surprises there. The province still has M P A C in a in a holding pattern as far as updating. The assessment, so. With no news there. Um, I had attended an information session on. The waste, um, really is eye-opening. Um, we do need to need to consider the age of our landfill sites. We need to consider how we do recycling. Um, we need to consider how it's going to change. Um, going forward, that that's going to be a big change. I also attended um, an information session about aging in place. And not only was was it uh uh information about um about how the government. Um, is working at at creating new spots, but what I didn't realize and I I and it came to mind our um. Our Crescent Care in the municipality is the impact. Um, that 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 has on supporting the municipality. We have businesses who go in plumbing, electrical. Um, maintenance that support um Crescent Care. So that was quite interesting. And all in all, I found um, um, the session this year quite interesting. I quite enjoyed it.
Thank you, Jane. Anyone else? None. Um, next, we're going to go into closed session. Um, that council will proceed into a closed meeting session under the Municipal Act, section two thirty-nine, two B. Personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees regarding personnel committee minutes. Personnel committee minutes. B, personal matters about an identifiable individual, including municipal or local board employees. Regarding organizational review succession planning. And F, advice that is subject to solicitor client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose regarding legal advice. So I need a mover in the seconder to go into close. Eric? And Jane? Any discussion? All in favor? That's carried. So we'll give Chris some some time. Maybe Eric, could you lock the doors?